Good evening. It is Monday, September 19th, 2022. It is 6:02 PM in the Nashua North Boardroom. We have in attendance with our meeting tonight, Mr. Neil Claffey, Ms. Right Glenn Lambeer, and Jessica Brown. We do have a quorum. Also in attendance, we have Dottie Oden joining us this evening, and Dr. Kimberly Sarfey. And we have a few guests who are going to be sharing with us this evening. So, let's go right into the agenda. The first item of business is the Wilson introductory training presentation.
Great. Thank you so much. So, one of the things that we really tried to pursue this year is Wilson Level One Training for our teachers who are interested in our reading specialists. I know that's a project that Dr. McKinney worked on for quite some time with Kim Elliott and with a couple of the other reading specialists. One of the prerequisites to the Wilson Level One Training is this three-day Wilson introductory training. And this training occurred during the summer in August. And luckily, we have two teachers here who participated in the training, and they are going to talk a little bit about their experience. One of the teachers is going to go ahead and pursue the Wilson Level One certification. And then, we have another teacher who already has some pretty extensive certification and background. So, at this time, probably going to stop at the three-day training. But I'm going to let the ladies kind of take it away and talk about their experience.
I'll go first. My name is Amy Schuler. I teach fifth grade at Led Street School. I'm here to speak about my experience regarding a recent professional development opportunity I took part in. Last spring, Dr. Sarfey informed the elementary school teachers that there would be an opportunity to become Wilson Reading Certified. I signed up immediately. We were told that there would be a three-day introductory course that would be required, followed by a one-day course on the practicum requirements, and a full year of working with a student, being observed a minimum of five times by the Wilson trainers, and completing the online Wilson Academy course for steps one through six in order to become certified. This opportunity is being funded by the school district, and I'm extremely grateful. Wilson Reading System is a Tier Three intervention program used with students who have significant difficulty in word level decoding, word recognition, fluency, spelling, including students with dyslexia who require an intensive remedial program. This program is used with students in one-on-one or small group settings. The definition of dyslexia is defined by the International Dyslexia Association as a specific learning disability that is neurobiological in origin. It is characterized by difficulties with accurate and/or fluent word recognition and by poor spelling or decoding abilities. These difficulties typically result from a deficit in phonological components of language that is often unexpected in relation to other cognitive abilities and the provision of effective classroom instruction. Research indicates that dyslexia has no relationship to intelligence. Dyslexia cannot be cured. However, we do know how to help these individuals become independent readers with appropriate systematic and intensive instruction. Approximately one out of five, or 15% to 20% of the population, have some symptoms of dyslexia. According to those statistics, I can be safe to assume that approximately four or five of my students have some symptoms of dyslexia. Led Street has 416 enrolled students. Statistically, 82 of those students could have symptoms of dyslexia, and that's an entire grade level. As a fifth-grade regular education teacher, I work with students every day that struggle with reading. Every year, I work with students who struggle to keep up with their peers in reading. Every year, I adjust my instruction to incorporate phonological awareness, sound-symbol association or phonics, syllable instruction, orthography, morphology. Every year, I have students that I 100% know struggle with undiagnosed dyslexia that would benefit from Wilson instruction. I will be using the learning I acquire from this practicum and certification to work in small groups with the students in my class who are struggling the most. For years, I knew that these students needed more than guided reading instruction or leveled reading groups, but I did not have the resources or the training needed to really help close their gaps. I knew they had serious gaps in phonological awareness, fluency, spelling, and accuracy. I knew in order to close those gaps, I needed something with a more systematic approach, and struggled putting my own lessons together when I knew there had to be something out there that I didn't know about. I'm excited to have the opportunity to get this training and the knowledge, and then use this program in my classroom. Currently, Nashua early elementary teachers have access to Hagerty and Foundations. Hagerty and Foundations are the Tier One or whole group, given to every student, I'm hoping. The next district purchase and training will be for Just Words, which is a Tier Two intervention for students in grades four through 12. I teach fifth grade, so that would benefit my kids. I'm hopeful that as Nashua teachers continue to use science of reading-backed programs like Foundations and Hagerty, that there will be fewer students who struggle with reading. I'm hopeful that as more teachers become trained in these programs and certified in programs like Wilson Reading System or any other multisensory structured language program that our most struggling students will be given the opportunity to learn to read to. We know that this kind of instruction not only helps students with dyslexia, but there is substantial evidence that it is effective for all students. I want to complete the certification for the students I know who need it this year, who needed it last year, and who will need it next year. I had difficulty preparing to talk with you this evening because I wanted to stay focused on my Wilson training and upcoming practicum. However, I found myself starting to stray towards wanting to talk about the importance of learning about the science of reading, the importance of providing elementary teachers with the training and comprehensive programs to help teach all of our students, including the ones who will only be successful with a structured literacy approach like the Wilson programs or Hagerty, so that our middle and high school teachers can take our very capable students to the next level. I wanted to talk about how Fuentes and Pennell many lessons that is our current curriculum resource in Nashua has six lessons that talk about reading multi-syllable words and one lesson on Greek and Latin roots, how they help a reader understand what a word means. That's it. And I can promise you that is not nearly enough lessons. I learned more in that three-day course about how to support our dyslexic students than I did in college. I'm excited to begin my practicum in the next couple of weeks to learn even more about how to help my students. Thank you to the district for providing the funds to support this effort. Bringing these programs to our buildings district-wide and getting as many trained and/or certified teachers for these programs is essential to improving our students' reading abilities. Every year, I have felt extreme guilt in knowing that in some ways, I had failed my most struggling readers. So, I'm doing this practicum for them.
Well, that about says it all. But I have a few little points to add, I guess, about my own experience. I'm Latisha Meehan. I teach third through fifth grade intensive needs over at Main Dunstable. And I have been teaching in, this is my 10th year teaching in New Hampshire. Before that, I taught in Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and South Carolina. And I will say that although we have our struggles in this district, this is the best district I have ever taught in for special ed. The best. So, we have a lot of foundation here for really reaching all our kiddos. When I came here, I took a graduate course in reading, and it blew my mind. As a special educator for all these years, since 1988, I had not also learned very much about teaching kids to read. We take a whole language approach. We want to teach kids to love reading. We want to read good books to them. We want to give them good books to read. We want to draw pictures about our reading and talk about our reading and all that sort of thing. But we don't learn about the mechanics. It's still a deficit that school districts have to make up with their teachers once they get into the field, because it's still, our undergraduate teaching programs haven't caught up. I asked the instructor of that course, "How do I get more of this?" And she pointed me to the Dyslexia Center in downtown Nashua, where I did about 200 hours of supervised practicum over the years to get my certification in Orton-Gillingham methodology. And last year, I became a supervisor and was training other tutors. So, I'm very passionate about teaching reading. And, you know, as my colleague has said, this is really integral for our kids with dyslexia. It's also important for our kids who lack vocabulary and just natural reading experiences for other reasons. Our at-risk kiddos, our ELL kiddos, our kids with intellectual disability and other disabilities can all benefit from this systematic instruction. And they do in my classroom. One struggle that I've had over the years is Orton-Gillingham is a methodology. It's not a curriculum. So, I was creating every lesson plan from scratch, which takes hours. And we have so many things to do as educators that if we can get some help with that through a curriculum, it's amazing. So, I've been very excited as I see Wilson curricula coming in. You know, we have Foundations, which is Tier One for the younger students. It can also be used as Tier Two. We mentioned Just Words, which is a Tier Two curriculum that can be used from third grade on up. And Wilson is a Tier Three. I have just started using Wilson this year, and the district bought me a full classroom kit. I'm super grateful for that kit, because it takes my lesson planning from an hour per group to 15 minutes per group, which is actually realistic, because I teach a lot of groups every day. And I teach math, and I do behavior management, and I talk to parents a lot, and file things in IEP folders and all that good stuff. So, it's extremely helpful to give us a realistic workload. So, I showed up at the three-day training thinking, "Yes, you know, Wilson." I'm a little cynical sometimes. I'm very idealistic, and then I get cynical. I showed up to the training thinking, "Well, they've developed, there's a new addition now." Well, of course there is, because now we all have to buy all the new stuff, right? I was so impressed. They have really looked at the weaknesses that existed in the program before. They have integrated Lynda Mood Bell's work on teaching comprehension to kids who don't visualize when they read. They've integrated Isabel Beck's latest work and research on teaching vocabulary effectively to children. They've integrated morphology throughout the levels. You know, they start with the very first level where kids aren't even reading any long vowels yet, and they're already learning some Latin roots, and they're integrating them into their knowledge base, knowing what they mean and seeing how effective it is. If you know this root, you can put all these different prefixes that you've learned on it and make so many words. And it can help you not only read those multi-syllabic words, but figure out what they mean. You know? So, it's really a lot of bang for the buck for our kiddos to expand their vocabulary. So, I was just very impressed with all the research that they've incorporated in these different areas into the Wilson curriculum for our students. You know, and I have students every year who have intense behavioral and emotional challenges when they're younger and a reading disability. And they come to me, and now they're ready to learn, and they're in fifth grade. We have to get those kids caught up. And, like, I have a little guy in my class this year. His full-scale IQ is average. The visual spatial IQ is 124. He's a bright child. So much potential. If I have a tool to get that kid caught up, his potential could be met down the road. And we saved the district a lot of money, because we can get that kid out of special ed. You know, in the next three or four years, by the time he hits high school, he could be in regular ed, which would be fabulous for many reasons, you know? I will close by saying, one of my best moments was meeting a young lady from RIV, who was graduating from their nursing program, which is extremely rigorous. It's the best, it's the top in the state. And she was the girlfriend of one of my husband's students over there. He's a professor. And she recounted to me that her guidance counselor had told her she wasn't college material, because she had dyslexia. And here she was graduating from RIV's nursing school, and she wasn't from Nashua. But I encouraged her to go see her guidance counselor. I said, "And don't, you know, you don't have to say, 'I told you so,' but I want you to share your success, because our kiddos with dyslexia can contribute to this society in huge ways if we have the right intervention." And I think if we can give teachers a realistic way to do that and give them the training they need, you know, I may do this training, because I want the group training. And I think you have to do the Level One training to get the group training, which I do need, you know? But for you all to provide this for teachers, it really can make a huge difference on a lot of fronts, you know, for our kiddos. So, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, ladies, both very much. Those are great remarks. Do you have anything to add, Dr. Sarfey?
I sure do. So, the first thing is, I mean, how incredibly lucky are we that we have educators who talk about kids the way that they do with such love and such compassion for students? It's really, it's so inspiring to me. I mean, honestly, I'm over here with, like, tears in my eyes a little bit, because it means a lot. And if I was a parent at home, listening to you all speak, I would feel so good about my kids being in your schools and being in your hands. So, there's that. The other thing I really want to point out is that, you know, obviously, our data is demonstrating that we need to do things a little bit differently. We have teachers who are so incredibly committed, and what we need to make sure that we're doing is putting resources in their hands that are aligned to the science. We also have to make sure that we are offering professional development opportunities that are grounded in the science. And so, this opportunity that these ladies have talked about tonight is just one example of that. You know, the Wilson introductory training, again, it was three full days in the summer. But we had over 40 teachers who were willing to give up three full days, on top of all kinds of other professional development opportunities that they delved into. The last thing I just want to say is, there was another teacher from Dr. Crisp who couldn't be here today. That's Julie Morris, and she is a fourth-grade teacher. And she wanted to make sure that she shared her thoughts about the training. And what she said was this, "Dear members of the Nashua School Board, I'm writing to express my gratitude for the opportunity that you provided for teachers in our district to participate in the Wilson Language Training. Over the summer, I took the introductory course and learned a lot of new information and intervention strategies. The approach that I learned holds much value and applicability for helping our students to become stronger readers. The professional development experience definitely made me interested in continuing the Level One training." And again, I want to emphasize that this is a year-long commitment on top of their regular teaching load. The fact that we have teachers who want to do this is pretty incredible." And then Julie closes by saying, "Well, I will not be able to participate in this year's cohort. I certainly hope that this opportunity will be made available again in the near future. Thank you again for supporting the district's teachers in our continuing effort to be the best educators that we can be for our students." And that's it. I don't know if you have any questions?
Thank you. Does anyone from the committee have any questions or comments? Yes, Ms.?
Well, first, I just want to say, you guys are amazing. It was so cool to hear you talking about your students and your classes and being so enthusiastic, and Nashua was really lucky to have you. The question I was, wanted to ask, though, was, what about the kids who aren't able to catch up in elementary school? Is there services for them in middle school and junior high?
Yeah. Latisha, do you want to talk about it, or?
Yeah. I do send a lot of kids up to Elm Street Middle School and the Intensive Needs Program up there. The lead teacher there is Wilson certified, I believe, and she just got her Orton-Gillingham certification. And there are several teachers up there who have done that as well, who I don't work directly with. But yes, this can be a long-term project for kiddos, especially, like, I have a couple new fifth graders this year who are reading right now on a first-grade level. They'll go to middle school next year, they won't be finished. But I have confidence that they'll continue to get the intervention that they need, you know? And I think the more teachers we train, the more confidence we can have in that. And the Wilson program is suitable all the way through to adulthood.
That's great. Thank you.
The other thing I just wanted to add is that we did offer essentially, like, a 12-week course, and it was focused on improving reading for older students, specifically those in sixth grade and above. And we had, I'm just looking at my list right here. We had a total of 48 teachers sign up for that and commit to that training. Yeah.
Just a little follow-up to that. The Wilson program, so that really does utilize the Orton-Gillingham methodology, that they are very well-integrated?
Yes. They basically... They basically have taken a Orton-Gillingham lesson framework, and they've created a scope and sequence that is sequential with the phonics. And then, they have laid out a curriculum that uses that format, and they train teachers to use that format, but they also provide us with all the materials. So, I have different sets of word cards with the lesson numbers on and the sub-numbers on, so that everything's very organized, and it makes it, everything's there in that curriculum for you to use. They give a reading book with sentences and with whole stories, so it's very closely aligned.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you for your dedication to your students and to your craft.
So, this evening, you're not looking for any votes particularly, right? Can I just actually ask one more follow-up question? So, how do, I really, again, I agree with everyone up here and everyone else. It's amazing to have you guys come and talk to us tonight, and your enthusiasm and your dedication to quality education. It's amazing. So, I'm just curious, I mean, obviously, the Orton-Gillingham and the Wilson programming, it's really working to move the district forward. How does that, how do you feel, and this is a little off-subject, about the Fuentes and Pennell that was, I mean, if you don't want to answer right now, you can write me an email later.
So, like, with anything, you can find good and bad with it. A lot of my students are not at the level that they can read independently and then think so deeply and make those deep connections that they need to make at that higher level. And there's not a lot of support for building phonics, building spelling, building fluency, accuracy, all, because there's six lessons in fifth grade for reading multi-syllable words. And that's all they read practically, is multi-syllable words. And so, a lot of them don't know how to break the syllables apart. And there's not anything in the mini lessons, maybe six, that teach them that. And one lesson on Greek and Latin roots, that's huge for affixes and breaking apart science and social studies words and those higher vocabulary words. And it just doesn't do a great job of that. It does introduce a lot of genre study, and it introduces a lot of questioning while you're reading, and it does a lot of, it has other great pieces, but it doesn't really teach the kids word attack enough.
That was great. Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I really appreciate that, because I'm just trying to get a sense of, I really like the fact that you're taking the tools, finding, picking, choosing what's best and what's really working to give the kids the foundations they need to have a more enriching reading experience later.
I think historically in this country, there's been a battle between so-called whole-language teaching and the phonics-based instruction. And I wish we could stop that, because like many things, both have a value. And I don't, you know, there was an article in May, May 22nd, actually, in the New York Times, it was called, "In the Fight Over How to Teach Reading, This Guru Makes a Major Retreat." The guru was Lucy Calkins. And this was where she admitted that there's not enough phonics. Some districts reacted by banning her curricula, like, I love her curriculum. It's very, it's idealistic, and she comes from a viewpoint of every kid is a natural reader. Well, no. Many are, but many are not, and we have to meet both. But I really feel too, like, I went to the Training for the Writing Program, the Units of Study and Writing, loved it. It doesn't have the nuts and bolts, but if I want my kids to love writing, that's the curriculum. If I want them to get the nuts and bolts, though, I need something else. So, I'm hoping, you know, and I think we have just incredible leadership here with Dr. Sarfey. I think at this point with her leadership, we're a district that can figure out how to meld these two important curricula and not throw one out for the other, and then five years from now have to backtrack and say, "Well, we do want kids to love reading." You know? We need both.
I think you're right. I know that there's a shift towards, well, not a shift, it's what we should have always been doing, the balanced reading approach. And so, anecdotally, for my own kids, they've now been in the school district long enough that I've had some go through more of like a phonics-y program. The Lucy Calkins program was actually, they were piloting it when my oldest one was in fourth grade, and my youngest one started with it. And it's interesting to see their different reading or writing styles. And I do actually agree with you. The Lucy Calkins writing for elementary is delightful. But, but you still are missing out on some other pieces here, and I really appreciate the fact that the district is making such a strong effort to put all the pieces together.
Yeah. Kids need to understand sentence structure, too, you know? And I think, like, with the Wilson, we see that we're teaching kids syllable types at the first-grade level. By the time they get to grade five, where they really have to read these multi-syllable words, they're very familiar with a lot of different syllable types. And now, they're just learning how to put them all together. And wouldn't that be wonderful as a fifth-grade teacher for the kids to come in with that foundation?
Yeah. And I think, too, where the science of reading plays heavily is in K to two, K to three, which is why we have, like, the Foundations and Hagerty to, like, build those, which is probably why Fuentes and Pennell doesn't have a whole lot of lessons to support that multi-syllable word reading, because they're supposed to know it, and they don't. So, many don't. So, I think if we're, can be really heavy in that K to three phonemic awareness-phonics approach, then hopefully, the numbers of struggling readers will be less, because then we'll catch them with more foundations for Tier Two or Wilson if they need it. But I think we need to put a strong focus on those K to three kids with this science of reading stuff to really build up those just basic word attack decoding skills.
Ms. Lambeer?
So, I heard you talking about the curriculum for the Wilson stuff, and it made me wonder, you can use it year after year, I'm sure, right? I know that we're bringing some things into the district where we have, you know, lead teachers that can bring other teachers on board. I didn't know if that works this way, or if it's something where you can't use that technique unless you're certified. So, that was just my question.
Yes. So, what we're, so, all the different components that these ladies are talking about really just kind of aligns to our vision as a district when it comes to ELA instruction. I mean, we are super committed to explicit systematic phonics instruction, because we know that the research tells us that kids need to be able to be, they need to be taught the code. It's really important, and that's how we kind of lay the foundation and have those building blocks. At the same time, I also like what they're talking about in terms of us taking a both-and approach. We're not going to just throw anything away. There are lots of components of balanced literacy that we want to preserve, because they know, we know that they are effective for our kids. And at the same time, we don't deny the research. We accept it, and we help, we let it inform our practice. When it comes to, when it comes to the training, I mean, what we have been doing is building this coalition, and the coalition is growing and growing. And this really is, marries nicely with our work with TLA, which is going on pre-K to eight. We definitely have a focus, and we're definitely working towards something, which is improved literacy instruction. So, I think that, I think that the folks who have engaged in this three-day introductory course and the folks who go through the year-long practicum, I know that they will continue to share their knowledge with their colleagues, and, you know, a lot of them will present at faculty meetings. We have our reading specialists who are, who are very collaborative when it comes to their building principles. So, like, we're continuing to share the knowledge, and I think that's the best part about working with teachers who are so collaborative. They're not just kind of like, holding on to what they've learned and then shutting their doors and saying, "No, you know, we don't want to help you." I mean, you know, what Amy's talking about is that, I think you said altogether at Led Street, there could be around 82 kids who could potentially demonstrate some sort of symptom of dyslexia. So, Amy's over here saying, "Listen, I want to be able to help all 82 kids in my building, and if that means sharing my knowledge with my colleagues, then I know that they're willing to do that."
Today, that I'll share with you, too, right outside my door, there's a third-grade teacher. And she's actually even a little older than me, which is saying something. And this is brand-new to her. So, she was asking me some questions about the Foundations the other day, and I thought, "Ooh, I really have to support her, because she really doesn't have experience with this kind of reading teaching." Today, she was doing a whole-class lesson, and she was using some of the video instruction from the Wilson Academy, which is made available to teachers. So, she's a Foundations teacher. There's a Foundations Academy, which is videos for her, videos for the children, all kinds of extra resources that are free online. And they're downloadable, printable, projectable, all kinds of things. And they're downloadable, printable, projectable, all kinds of things. She was doing some really good instruction with the help of that video teacher. And I think she and the kids were both sort of learning together what this was really about. And I could see those kids doing a really good job. I could hear them. And they were really drilling on their sounds. And it just made me happy because I thought, you know, the more PD, the more collaboration, the better. But there is also a great online resource that's helping her be effective right off the starting gate, so.
Well, ladies, thank you so much for being with us this evening. This has been a really great presentation, very informative and encouraging. All right. So next up is Confianza. And so I think we're going to get to hear from Mr. Bob Choppa.
Or maybe we won't. I'm going to start because I have my notes in front of me. But yes, thank you so much, ladies. First, I want to say how grateful I am that Mr. Choppa and I, we collaborate all the time. We're always looking to problem solve and he's a great partner. So there's that. You can pay me tomorrow. Okay. So one of the things that we just want to talk about is our continuation and our expansion of our partnership with Confianza. So initially, we reached out to Confianza to help us in our response to the DOJ settlement. And we asked them to contract with us to help train our teacher facilitators, who then went ahead and turnkeyed the information that they learned from the folks at Confianza to be able to educate our staff. So in our DOJ settlement, it talks about how we have to have a certain amount of professional development that has to be delivered to all staff, or all teachers, rather, in our school district. But the professional development has to be delivered in person and by ELL-certified teachers. And so we would love to have so many more ELL-certified teachers, but we were very lucky that we were able to kind of find this cohort of people who are willing to spend a lot of time with Bob, with me, and the folks from Confianza to kind of learn the content and then go ahead and turnkey it. What we plan to do this year is use a little bit more of the Confianza modules that have already been built, rather than having our facilitators spend so much time co-constructing the modules. We're going to take modules that are pre-existing and then they're really going to learn about the content so that they can go ahead and deliver it. Another piece of our partnership with Confianza is really about our school leadership support. And Confianza is helping us to kind of develop our vision for equitable access to evidence-based instruction. We've had some great planning meetings with them. We've had a lot of deep conversations as an administrative team about what does it mean to have equitable access to evidence-based instruction? And that work continues with not only just what's happening at the district level, but also in our conversations with our entire administrative team, principals, assistant principals, directors. And then obviously, that information gets trickled down to teachers when the modules are delivered. If you want to add on that?
Yeah. You know, when the Department of Justice came in and, you know, came with their findings, it was certainly like, whoa, it was very daunting, you know? And kind of, wow, this is a lot of work. But I, what I'm really happy about is we all quickly realized what a great opportunity this is to provide teachers with professional development that's going to benefit not just the English, we're not presenting this as just an English-language learner kind of, it's instruction. And it's instruction that's going to help a broad base of kids. So instead of, I mean, I don't, I don't want to say take a negative, but, you know, the Department of Justice coming in, probably not a great thing. But we are turning it into a positive of using the opportunity to really provide really quality professional development for our teachers that will be, that can, you know, benefit a pretty large portion of kids.
Excellent.
So what we're really looking for tonight is we are looking for a recommendation to approve the contract with Confianza.
And so this is extending the previous contract to include more?
It is, yep. Well, this is a new contract for the, for the school year. The reason why we brought it before the committee again is because it's just, it's obviously more expensive than what we, than what we paid last year. And that's because we only had sort of like a half-year partnership with them. But this, this contract that you have before you will take us through the end of the school year.
Yeah. Last year, the facilitators and we kind of developed a lot of the units, the presentations. And what was, was really cool is all teachers have access to a software program called Elevation. And what that is, it's, it's for the English-language learner program and there's two kind of sections to it. One is data, so that every teacher can see the different levels of their students all by each domain, reading, writing, and listening. And then the other area of it is strategies, where it provides strategies by content area, by just all of these different, there's content and also different strategy, building background input, which is, you know, beneficial for lots of kids. Every teacher in the district has access to this. So we kind of married the professional development and what we were talking about to the program. So it was kind of like, here's what we're talking about and here's your resource. So that was kind of, kind of cool. So Confianza is going to continue that, not as robust as what we did last year. We're going to, you know, like I said, going just to, not just, but also looking at it as a broad instructional opportunity. But that was a really nice way to marry what we were talking about with a resource that was currently in the teacher's hands.
Anybody have any questions?
Oh, boy.
Yes. On the fifth page of the attachment that we received, which is, I think, the first page of the contract, I don't know if you can see that. Do you have it?
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
So the Professional Learning Program Proposal and Agreement is at the top. I guess it's the fifth page of, this is really huge. It says 2002. I just thought, man. We don't want to be agreeing to something. Later on, the date's fine. That's, that's.
Thank you. Yeah. We'll definitely get a revised version of this. Thank you for pointing that out.
Go ahead.
I have so many questions all the time. So I was looking at this and I saw that it says, it's highlighted, it says, "We need to collaborate on refining the schedule for onsite visits and to build the NSD learning walk format." And I seem to recall from when we first talked about Confianza, they were planning on coming out, but then if there weren't enough teachers that were signed up, we wouldn't be charged and they would reschedule. Is that what happened with their problems getting teachers that were, had the time to do this, or?
So I'll be honest, I actually don't remember that challenge because we hadn't planned, we did, we conducted one learning walk with them, but it was really sort of, it was like kind of fact-finding on their behalf. They wanted to see kind of what instruction looked like in our district. And we just went ahead and we visited some classrooms. But I don't recall having those challenges because that wasn't part, the learning walks were not part of what we were striving for last year. This year, I think it's kind of the same sort of intention in terms of having them come and conduct some of the learning walks with us as a leadership team so that they can see, the goal obviously would be able to see some application of the knowledge that teachers are acquiring during the Professional Development Day.
Okay. All right. That sounds good. Thanks.
There's no more questions. I'll go ahead and make a motion to recommend to the full board that we approve the proposed agenda agreement with Confianza in the amount of $75,500 to be paid for out of ESER funds.
Second?
And a second from, a second from Mr. Claffey. And all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for coming in. All right. Next up, we have the TLA Preschool Institute and Lab Site Work.
Yes. So I'll be really quick about this. So I kind of touched upon this earlier. What we're looking to really do is, well, not what we're looking to do, what we have been doing is partnering with TLA. And we specifically went with TLA because they do believe in preserving the best parts of balanced literacy and making sure that we're not just completely throwing out these practices that we know are great for our kids. And at the same time, they're very well-informed about the current research and helping that research to inform our practice and, and kind of, you know, the whole idea of when you know, when you know better, you do better, right? And that's what we're trying to do every single day. So with that, one of the things that we did was we partnered with TLA for our preschool institute that we held over the summer. This was the first preschool that's, institute that's ever been offered. Trish Bolio and, who is the principal of Charledev, and the Dr. Chris Principal, Sherri Fulton, they have been hosting this Grade One Institute for a couple of years now. And the Grade One Institute is attended by almost all of the Grade One teachers in the district. So then I hopped on the bandwagon, I'm sorry, they, they host the Grade K Institute. I just told a lie. Sorry. And then I hopped on the bandwagon and I said, hey, can I collaborate with TLA? And then can I offer a Grade One Institute? And so the, the response to that was overwhelmingly positive. Teachers absolutely loved the day. And then what we decided to do was go ahead and host a preschool institute for our preschool teachers over at Broad Street and then Franklin Street and then the different programs that are spread throughout the district. And I have to say that when I saw some of these teachers at either NTO, because it was some of our brand-new teachers, or I saw them, other, other teachers who participated subsequently during our last PD day on the 13th, they were so incredibly grateful that they were able to have this experience because never before has an entire day just been dedicated to our preschool teachers. And it seems, it seems so obvious, like, I'll be honest, last year, I feel like I, I didn't really consider the preschool teachers as much as I should have, mostly because it's not really my area of expertise. I wasn't sure what to do with them. And so that's why I'm really grateful to have a partner who's, who knows so much about preschool work and who's able to say, hey, Ken, these are some of the workshops that we can institute. The other thing I just wanted to say was, I also reached out to Keith Richard from South. And also, the folks who run the Purple Panther Program over at South are students who are, you know, educating our young children who, whose parents tuition them into the, to the Purple Panther Program. And I asked Keith if it was possible for the students to be able to participate in our professional development. And Keith said absolutely yes, that's an amazing opportunity. And so, super shout-out and thanks to the folks who run Purple Panthers because it was really their idea. And what's so great about that is that we have students within our schools who are getting the same training as our certified teachers who work for us. And then ultimately, our goal obviously is to have those students come back and then continue sharing their knowledge.
I think that was a really great idea. Thanks for doing that. So that was just kind of informative, right?
It was. Oh, yes. Okay. So hold on. I do have a recommendation. So here we're going with this. So we had the preschool institute and what we'd like to be able to do is continue to expand, I'm sorry, expand our partnership with TLA. And, there we go. So what you have before you is you have a proposal for some school-based coaching, which is really the same school-based coaching that we're doing in grades K through eight. And then additionally, workshops for the pre-K teachers specifically during our PD day, our, our full-release PD days. And then also, we have some opportunities for some online workshops, which are very popular with the teachers in grades K to eight. And then additionally, within the contract, this includes some planning meetings with district leadership and also building leadership.
Excellent. So I have one question about this. I actually spoke with a paraprofessional yesterday who was really thrilled with the fact that they were able to be included in the CBI training that went on, I think, last week.
Yes.
And they hadn't, because they had never had the opportunity before as a district. For the preschool paras, will that be extended, the option possibly be extended to them as well?
Yeah. So that, so I did a 360-degree survey, I put that out there last year. And one of the pieces of feedback that I got from paraprofessionals last year is that they wanted to be able to experience the same professional development as the teachers that they work with. And it only makes sense, right? So that they have the same knowledge, the same language. And so on the September 13th PD day, which we'll get to, we had opportunities, the same opportunities that teachers have for the paras. And we, it's something that was so well-received, the, the feedback from both the teachers who work with the paras and from the paras was just really, really positive. So that's something that we want to continue. The one caveat that I'll say is there are some contractual considerations. So paraprofessionals are paid for certain days, certain PD days and not for others. So some of the professional development opportunities might be optional and they might not necessarily be paid opportunities. But that's, that's bigger than me. I have to go back to the contract language and see exactly what the contract says. But I certainly want to make sure that we're opening up the PD to everybody, including the paras.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. So, anybody have any questions? All right. I move to approve the proposed agreement with Teaching and Learning Alliance in the amount of $23,900 to be paid for by ESER funds.
Second?
With a second from Ms. Lampier. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. And, oh, I'm sorry. And go ahead, Ms. Oden.
No. I'm sorry. I just have a question. For parents that wanted to go to the training, if it's not in the contract, might there be something offered or talked to the union about possibly if they volunteer to go and they want to go, if they, if they were going to get paid for it? And if they didn't want to go, that was strictly up to them, might, might the union consider something optional for paras?
Yes. I will say that on the September 13th, it was optional for paras. They could either, they could either come and attend the Professional Development Day. And I would say probably the majority did. We had a training, a math training here, a K-5 training, and this entire room was full of paras. But then we actually, because we had a session for paras and a session for teachers. But what was so neat is that we had teachers who snuck in so that they could be with their paras during the training. It was kind of amazing. So on that day, it was. I just can't speak for the rest of the Professional Development Days because I'd have to go back to see the contract. Yep.
Okay. All right. So, well, actually, this leads us nicely into the informational September 13th Professional Development Day.
I definitely won't belabor this. This is, there's a lot here. I do want to give a shout-out to our UA coordinators who worked to make sure that they provided some professional development opportunities to the folks in their content areas. I think very often UA teachers are left out and we didn't want that to happen. So I definitely want to give a shout-out to those guys because I had teachers, UA teachers specifically reach out to me and say, you know, we're so grateful that we had that opportunity, but that's, that wasn't my work. It was the coordinators. So I wanted to kind of give a shout-out to them. I also wanted to give a shout-out to Marsha Bagley for making sure that we had CPI training and inclusion training for, for so many of our teachers and paraprofessionals. And then the other thing that I'll say is, so the rest of the opportunities that, that I organized really had to do with teacher feedback and what teachers were letting me know that they needed, they needed some support with. The, the feedback, I actually have, I want to project it right now. So the feedback for the Professional Development Day was pretty positive. You know what? Let me just shut this. Thank you. Got it. I got it. You can hear the laughs back there, but it's fine. I don't know how well people at home can see this, but I just wanted to let you know. So I had 301 responses. Neil, I know you like a big sample size. 301 is pretty good, right? And so I used a Like-Art scale. So one basically means this was the worst possible opportunity ever, I hated it. And five is it's the greatest thing that ever happened. So what you'll see here is that we had some 504 training that was very well-received. And I really have to credit Mr. Choppa with this. And the reason why it was so well-received is because we have new administrators who are going to be running the 504 meetings. And they might not have ever had training before. So some of the attendees were those administrators and they were really happy because in terms of learning something that's applicable, this really is a huge part of their job. But then we also had some other individuals, certainly, who, who engaged in that training. CPI training was very well-received. I will say, we had dyslexia training and there was quite a large group. I mean, it looks really bad to be in red when five is the best ever. But you see that this is kind of like a mid-range score for dyslexia training. I've been offering a lot of dyslexia training and some of the feedback that I received was that it was a little bit too rudimentary. Teachers had already been there, done that. So they kind of felt like... Teachers had already been there, done that, so they kind of felt like they wanted something a little bit more. I certainly want to give a shout-out to Veronica Boden, Sheila Shinnard, and also to Danielle Booton for organizing some amazing ELL professional development. And you can see that that was really well-received. The last thing I just want to kind of highlight is this foundations training. So the foundations training was delivered by Erin Putnam, who's our brand-new ELA coach for the elementary level. Erin is -- I can't even tell you just how incredibly knowledgeable she is. Her session was literally standing-room-only. There were so many people who signed up and then there are people who snuck into the room who didn't sign up. And the feedback, the anecdotal feedback that I got from teachers in this survey was so positive. There was one individual who said that it was the best session that she's ever attended. So many people wrote to me and said that Erin is so incredibly knowledgeable. We're so lucky to have her as part of our coaching staff. So I really just wanted to give a shout-out to her because she really deserved it. And then just one more thing to highlight is, or two more things to highlight, is that we have been working with Math Empowered Carolyn Marster. And if you notice where it says math, people really, really received her workshops positively. She's truly, truly remarkable. She takes our poor curriculum, Eureka, and then transforms it in a way that the curriculum is still -- she stays true to the curriculum but shows teachers how you don't have to just follow a script and you can make the curriculum so incredibly engaging. And I don't know if you follow me on Twitter, but there I have lots of pictures online. We had teachers in this room, all over the place, writing on chart paper and kind of sharing their learning and paraprofessionals too. And again, this room was really standing-room-only from the seats all the way down to where you all sit. Everybody wanted to come to Carolyn's workshop. So that was really great. And then last but not least, we had our TLA -- we had our TLA workshops, which for the most part were very well-received. And then one of the things that, if you look where it says, "The activity was useful and practical," so we got a 4.3 out of 5, which is still pretty good, right? But one of the sort of responses that I got from teachers is like, "Whoa. You know, I'm hearing all this stuff about research and the science of reading and does this mean we're going to completely abandon what we've been doing?" And I want to publicly say, "No, nobody's changing expectations. But what we are doing is making sure that we are embracing the research and we're going to continue moving forward so that we can reach every single one of our kids." Our data is showing us that like what we've been doing, if we're not including 2021, because I don't know that that data is very valid and useful, but what we've been doing is only reaching about half of our kids and that's been a trend. We've got to make sure that we're reaching the other half. And so that's when really embracing the research and having that inform our practice comes into play. So there we go. And obviously, Jessica Minahan, who delivers our trauma-informed PD, is always well-received, rather, and folks really, they really loved her. So, good to know. Again, the red, Jonathan Foster and I worked on this together. The red is -- looks a little bit scary, but a Likert scale, 1 to 5, and you get a 4.3 or a 4.1 or a 4.4. Those are pretty good scores, I would say, overall. Does anybody have any questions?
I just -- I was just wondering, it seems like there's something for all of the subjects other than, I don't see science or history or civic social studies. And I didn't know if it's just that there's not really any professional development available for social studies and civics or if it's nothing that fits with the district or ...
So, well, the first thing I can say is I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Elementary, right? But I will say that there was professional development that was afforded to all of the high school teachers and that was this formative training right here. And that applied to all of the content areas at the high school level. Some of the teachers did elect, because it's a 50/50 day and they had to sign up for some district-sponsored professional development opportunity, but the other half of the day could be, they could work on a personalized professional development plan and basically engage in whatever they needed, kind of like on their own. And some teachers did elect to do that. I don't get those, so I don't, at the secondary level anyway, so I don't know what that looked like. But I can tell you that in addition to this, Monica Tino and Angela St. Lawrence from at least pre-K to eight have been offering professional development and science non-stop. Like, and when I say non-stop, I mean non-stop. So there's a lot of science PD going on, but I can't speak to what's happening at the high school level.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much. All right. So I think, did you already speak to the grade one institute?
Yep.
And so some untapped resources in the district?
Yes, just give me one sec to get back to where it was. Jimmy gave me this very slow laptop here. Jimmy, it takes a long time to click on these links here. I don't know what's going on.
Well, I got to say, if the proof is in the pudding here, the research or the -- your feedback on the professional development, that seems pretty positive.
Yeah.
My apologies, Kim, but that did come from the school IT.
And that explains it.
Okay.
Our tech guy just told us, for those of you who don't have the microphones, our tech guy just said that that was from the school IT department. So, you know, maybe we should wrap that back into the budget when we do the audio upgrade.
And --
We're looking to get in the network, underwood.
All right. We'll write that on the list for Dan.
Speaking of IT, actually, you know what? You reminded me, Jimmy. Thank you. When you were being fresh, you reminded me. So I definitely wanted to give a shout-out to Adam St. Ange, to Donala Tina, to Greg Rodriguez, and I know I'm missing somebody. My goodness. But these guys, so I had over 23 sessions going on at North here. It was nuts. People showed up. They had Macs. They had all kinds of devices that were not compatible with what we have. And the IT department was on it. I did get texts, emails from our presenters saying, "I just want to let you know that your IT department was awesome." So definitely wanted to give a shout-out to them and thank you so much. And also, while I'm here, Jean Inzorillo and Peggy, who are at the main office here, they really helped to make sure that we secured all the rooms that we need for the PD day. It was like a daunting task to offer professional development for every single teacher and paraprofessional. So without those guys, we wouldn't have been able to do it. So just wanted to give them a shout-out. And then really quickly, so each month, I want to be able to highlight one of our coaches. I think it's really important that we know what we have in terms of resources. Monica Tino was working K through 5 when it comes to science coaching. And she approached me last year and she said, "Hey, can I possibly restructure my position and take a K-8 approach?" I know that her heart is in, it's really in the middle school. I don't want to say in the middle school, but she'll always love the middle school because that's the environment that she came from. And then when we brought Angela St. Lawrence on, she, you know, she was ready, willing, and able to also take that sort of pre-K to eight approach. And so I just wanted to kind of highlight over the summer. Now again, you know, these coaches are teachers and they are on a teacher's contract. But over the summer, Monica Tino planned and facilitated seven workshops and she had over 58 participants. Also want to shout-out, like 58 teachers showed up for this PD, which was pretty amazing. And what she's been trying to do is really help teachers to prepare to implement the NGSS, also amplify science. We've been rolling out grades three and four this year. And another thing that she's really committed to and, you know, kind of is married to what the two ladies who talked a little bit earlier tonight talked about, was this idea of, again, making sure that what we're doing is aligned to the research. And in the research, really talks about how we can explore and we can tackle ELA standards in contents that are not just the ELA class, right? We know that practicing scientists read and they write. They do that more than they perform experiments, right? And so Monica Tino has been working with all of our classroom teachers, especially in grade five, to be able to show teachers how, you know, we can talk about force and motion and we can still address our ELA standards. It doesn't have to be either or. There's room for both. So I just wanted to kind of highlight some of the work that she's done. She has truly been a godsend. She really has and we're super, super thankful for her.
Well, thank you to Ms. Tino and to all the teachers that put in the extra effort to learn some new techniques this summer as well. That's excellent. That kind of response rate for a summertime is wonderful.
Yep. It's great. Okay, and then, we're almost done, guys. Don't worry. I just put an informational piece in there about our FY '22 Curriculum Chronicle kickoff. And so essentially, the Curriculum Chronicle goes out every single Monday. I do listen to teacher feedback. I hear what you are asking me for. And some of the Curriculum Chronicle issues are pretty long, so teachers want to know at the onset, you know, what's in the edition, who is the target audience, and is there anything there that they might want to get to? So I try to, you know, throw some pictures in because we like to see our staff. It's pretty amazing. We like to see our kids. But you'll see that there were a ton of professional development opportunities that were offered. But again, I just want to make sure that I'm highlighting the fact that the professional development opportunities are not arbitrarily chosen. They all go back to our instructional priorities for ELA foundational literacy skills, math, science, and social studies.
Well, we were joking a little bit before the cameras came on about how this Curriculum Chronicle can get a little long. But I'll tell you, when you've got this much great stuff to put out there, it's hard to shorten it because I read through it and it's really informative and good. So I love it. And you do have an adorable picture of you on here, so that's wonderful. Is there anyone who has need?
I do have several pairs of glasses, Neil, and contacts as well. You'd be surprised.
Does anyone have any questions, comments regarding that? All right.
Dr. Starfie, you work so hard and you bring so much enthusiasm to this. And the Curriculum Chronicle is just, I mean, so much information, all these things that you brought to the district. It's really, really great.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you. I mean, again, I just, I could not do any of this work without our coaches and our administrators. They really helped to push our district forward. It's really important.
Awesome. So correspondence from teachers?
Yeah. So really, this just kind of, I should have brought this up earlier, not now. So we've, I just, you know, the reason why I want to highlight the positive feedback about our professional development is because I want you to keep approving it. Teachers love it. They need it. And they're really taking their learning and they're really helping to support our students. So again, there was another shout-out from Patty Flynn about the Wilson introductory course. And it doesn't have to do with like, you know, like offering it. It has to do with the fact that these guys are ready, willing, and able to engage in this learning. They're willing to give up their free time and they want to know more. So that's really amazing. Another thing that we did was we brought ANA, Achievement Network, to our district over the summer. I will say that professional development was not cheap, but it was incredibly high-quality professional development. I have engaged in this professional development myself. I also sat in for one of the days because we had our admin institute the other two days. But I sat in for one of the days and it really was incredible professional development. And so it's really exciting to see this correspondence from teachers because we know that they're going to take that learning and apply it in the work that they do every single day. So I hope that you continue to support our efforts. We've been very, very grateful. Obviously, we've used a lot of ESSER funds to offer really high-quality professional development. And, you know, when the ESSER funds are, when they dissolve 2024, we're going to have to be exploring some sort of different avenues for funding sources for our PD. And one of the things that I would like to advocate for is moving some of our positions that are in our title grants over to the operating budget because it's a little disheartening when we have an entire title grant or almost an entire title grant that's taken up by salaries. And these are salaries for absolutely critical positions that add a lot of value to our district, but they also, you know, putting those salaries in the title budget lines also kind of take away some of the opportunities that we could have for our teachers and our students. So just wanted to plug that.
Thank you for bringing that back up. That is true. It's something we look at each year and I am actually in agreement with you in what it's even looking at, whether some of the grant-funded positions still actually even apply to the grants that they're being supported by. So I think that, you know, we'll have to definitely take a look at that and...
And I do just want to say, you know, Dan Donovan has been great and has really listened when it comes to this issue and he's doing the best that he can, but there's only so much wiggle room, right? But again, some of our positions are absolutely critical. Our assistant principals, we wouldn't be able to operate our schools without our assistant principals. They should be in the operating budget.
Do you know off the top of your head how many of the APs are grant-funded and how many are in the budget?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you. I'm not sure.
Have that information? I just was wondering if you knew it right away.
I couldn't tell you.
I was shocked. I was actually surprised when I read how many, at least a portion of their job was grant-funded.
Right.
Because they really are indispensable, really at any level. I was going to say at the elementary level, but I think we couldn't run any of the schools without, I don't think.
Right. 100%. And then all of our coaches are funded through title grants and/or to, from ESSER because they're newer positions. They're all funded through title grants except for Ann Altman, our technology coach. But all of the other instructional coaches that are specific to the content areas are funded through our Title II and Title IV funds. And I just want to remind you, Title II pays for professional development and Title IV really pays for or is intended to pay for technology and innovation for our students.
Well, thank you. That was worth a plug. I like it. Does anyone have anything else to add this evening? All right. So I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned at 7:07. Thank you all so much for coming.